Comments. Welcome to the regular meeting of Minnehaw County Planning Commission. A few introductory comments, and of course, as a courtesy to everyone, please turn your cellphones off. Any final action taken on a conditional use permit application tonight will be taken, will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, August 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, on the 16th, at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings at the county commission are held, excuse me, in this same room. This time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the June 27th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the planning commission members on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none. If no objections, what we will do, I will go through and read each item, and should there be an objection from the audience on any item on the consent agenda, please raise your hand and it will be moved to the regular agenda. So, item number one is approval of the minutes. Item number two is to allow equipment sales and display and retail for trailers, and this is located at 2593-259-35482, Avenue, approximately a mile north of Brandon. Item number two. Item number three is a conditional use permit. Number 1652, to allow a single-family dwelling on property, which is located approximately one mile northwest of Dell Rapids. Mike Niemeyer is the petitioner. Is that it? That's a short one tonight. Item number four, right, well, that's a regular agenda, so we only have three. Okay, so that is a consent agenda. And we have no objections from the audience on any item? Yes?
I object to item two.
Okay, I didn't see your hand go up there, I'm sorry. Okay, then, item two will be moved to regular objection. Regular meeting. So then, we need approval of consent agenda, which includes item one and three.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So now, we need a motion to approve the regular agenda and include item number two. Motion to that effect?
So moved.
So moved, okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to approve the regular agenda, including item number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We will start with item number two with David Heinold presenting.
David Heinold, Planning Department. Conditional use permit 16-51 is to allow equipment sales, display, repair for trailers. The property is located about a mile and a half north of the city of Brandon city limits, right along Highway 11 or 472, Avenue. The, this request is being brought forth for, back up just a second here. So the property, just giving a little historical background and going through previous conditional use permits on the property, it's currently zoned light industrial. Was used as a contractor's shop and storage yard approximately eight years ago. The petitioner is bringing forth a request to allow equipment sales for trailer sales and other display and other equipment and other things. The petitioner plans to be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The petitioner does not plan to have any, or add any more employees than is currently present at the repair shop as allowed by the light industrial district. The narrative details that the trailers that would be used are certain Mototech trailers that are shipped from, and they're available for customer pickup at the site from a factory in Martinsville, Indiana, as that describes. On July 20th, July 12th, staff met with the petitioner at the subject property and went through some of the things in terms of the site plan. The petitioner has noted, staff had questions about the proposed parking area, because as you visit the site and as you'll note in the pictures that I'll proceed through, the petitioner is currently using this area as parking, which would need to be at least 15 feet back from that front yard setback for any parking or driving areas. Petitioner has noted that the area up here is an adequate space to allow employee parking and customer parking and additional storage on the north side. So, in some of the, I'll just go through some of the pictures that I took on, at the site while there. This is looking from the highway, looking towards the building with the three bays for the repair shop, which is currently being operated there. And the petitioner is requesting for equipment sales in display, which is a conditional use permit in the light industrial district. It's a commercial conditional use, which are allowed as conditional use in the light industrial zoning. Moving forward, this is the parking area that was highlighted in yellow on the site plan where customers, employees would park for pickup. This area in front of the building is currently being used as parking. Needs to maintain at least a 15-foot setback from the front property line for any parking or driving areas. This is pretty close to where that front property line would be, it would be right here. Again, looking towards back to the south side of that driveway from the highway. This is looking north off to the, off to the immediate east. You have the concrete plant there. And then, looking farther south, and then you go into the existing light industrial area with the manufacturing plant and additional warehousing and storage facilities. Most of the land in the vicinity is zoned for light industrial. As you proceed, and looking north, the area all the way around here is all agricultural. It's zoned for agriculture with a few residences in the nearby vicinity, but mostly agriculture in that area. So staff, so just some of the things. So, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of their property in the immediate vicinity. As I mentioned, the majority of the land to the south of the property is currently zoned for light industrial and other commercial uses, while the remaining land to the north is agriculture with a few houses nearby. There should be special consideration for any outdoor storage areas where there are residences in the vicinity, where the petitioner provide screening from the proposed trailer storage where those trailers are being displayed. Along that front yard setback, along the highway, as well as to the north of the property, as you can see right here, and looking in this view. The effect upon the normal and orderly development. The property is already zoned for light industrial use, which allows many other uses such as office, retail, warehousing, and other repair services, and as well as greenhouses. They meet the criteria in the zoning ordinance. Utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The subject property is accessed from the highway right here. As you can see, which is already currently hard surface, and the petitioner has a hard surface lot up to the doors of the building. Everything around the building, as it wraps around towards that parking area, is all gravel surface. The, as stated in previous conditional use permits, were that the property had to have that hard surfacing installed. And all other facilities have been provided to the current repair service business, requesting the conditional use permit. That off-street parking is provided, and loading requirements are met. Site plan indicates that there is enough area to the north of the building, as well as the area to the south of the building for the current parking, current parking needs. That measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed trailer sales, display, and repair shop maybe by general nature presents some noise issues through relative repair work conducted on the subject property, but it shouldn't be at a level to constitute a nuisance to surrounding property owners in the vicinity. The surrounding area consists of more intensive uses such as, as I mentioned, quarrying to the east and manufacturing to the south and other warehousing, repair services located in that existing light industrial area to the south, as well as the agricultural operations that are within the vicinity to the north, which would have a slightly minimal effect compared to the industrial uses, just as in general nature. The, any lighting should be directed downward onto the property or to mitigate any concerns about lighting off, or lighting projecting off-site, especially onto the highway. Six, health, safety. And one more thing, as far as at a minimum, the property owner should be required to establish a screening plan. You can kind of see from the images right here where the trees are. Just going back one, the petitioner has planted some coniferous trees along where the building would be, so the building would be screened, but extending north towards that parking area, there would be no screening in there, so the petitioner should develop a screening plan in order to help mitigate any concerns from the front property line or adjacent to the state highway, State Highway 11. The primary, or, the proposed use is located in areas identified as transition area, adjacent to, near the city limits of Brandon. This area, the primary goal of this area is to encourage new growth and development within municipalities and areas that are just outside where facilities and infrastructure can be, or infrastructure can be provided. The proposed use is compatible with surrounding land uses and should not significantly affect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Staff finds that the proposed use as trailer sales, display, and repair to be an appropriate use for the Iowa Light Industrial District, since the location for the proposed use is in an area where the county encourages commercial industrial land uses to locate. There should be few nuisances caused by the use of proposed business. So staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit 16-51 with six conditions, that CUP 16-51 allows trailer sales, display, and repair. Two, that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan received on 6/28/2016. Three, that all signage shall be in conformance with Article 16 and 17 of the zoning ordinance. Four, that all driveways, parking lots, and outdoor storage areas shall be in conformance with the requirements of Section 15.04 of the zoning ordinance. Five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded designed to prevent direct spillage of light off the property boundaries. And six, that the planning zoning department reserves the right to enter and expect the sales and repair business at any time after proper notice to the owner and to ensure that the conditions are being met within the permit and the zoning ordinance. So, answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions, please? David? Not, we'll have the petitioner come forward, thank you, David. And state your name and address, please, for the record.
I am Joanne Moen, 259-35482, Avenue, representing Matt Van Dyke.
Okay, any questions as far as the conditions or anything? Or any questions of the petitioner? Not yet. Okay, not yet, okay, thank you. And we may have you come back later if we need to answer a question. So, do you want to come up and address this issue, please? State your name and address.
I'm Sherry Carmen, and I live at 259-41482, Avenue. So the place immediately south of this property. And my concern is safety. I don't really have a problem what they're wanting to do, but I have a huge concern with safety. In about a half-mile spot from the railroad, if you're going north, you've got the concrete driveway, the Midwest Railcar driveway, immediately across from one another. You just get past those driveways and it goes to 45 miles an hour. Nobody drives 45 on that road. They're going 65 coming through Corson, which is just a source of frustration to me as it is. But by the time you hit the concrete driveway, you cannot see down to where that driveway is for this building. And we're trying to start, stop there to cross the road, and the people coming from the south going north are frustrated already and practically back-ending us on a regular basis, because they think we're stopping for no reason. They cannot see the traffic that is coming up already. And it's a, they're 65 miles an hour at that point. And if you do miss what's going on, there's nowhere to go except for into the river, which is a steep embankment, or a major, major broadsiding accident. And that is my big concern here, is the increased traffic at that speed limit with nowhere to go scares me.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, call for the board for action, please, or just further discussion?
Well, I certainly understand the concerns, I guess, of traffic, but I, I think it seems like a reasonable use for this piece of property. So I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion for the trailer sales, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we go to item number four, correct? Conditional use permit allowed to exceed 1,200 square feet of utility building. Clifford Malsum is located one mile southwest of Garrettson.
Good evening, David Heinold, Planning Department. This conditional use permit was deferred from last month's Planning Commission meeting, June 27th. Is a request to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 4,240 square feet. We, just go through this quickly, as we've seen this before. The subject property is located about two and a half miles southwest of Garrettson, city limits, and is, the request is within a subdivision of more than four lots, which is the reasoning for the conditional use permit hearing. The petitioner, as staff mentioned at the last hearing, there was a list of items that needed to be removed. Just going through this. The, so staff went out to the property about two weeks ago and inspected the property from what was, and this was two weeks after the Planning Commission meeting, and inspected the conditions. There was some material sitting in front of the building that was on a trailer, and it was just miscellaneous junk that was just recently moved from, as you can recall, the southern property boundary. There's a tree line here, so everything was moved onto the property boundaries within the trees. And some of that was within, in this driveway, so this area has been cleaned there. And just going through the list of items that would be to remove, there was, there was two truck chassis that were full of scrap iron and other materials. There was a black Dodge truck chassis, and it was a rusted tractor pickup, and as well as a white truck that was unlicensed, and it was sitting to the left of that building on the other side by the, right over here by this property line. Just going through, this is looking towards that property line over there. Just some, there's some farm machinery, road, or maintenance equipment for the property. This trailer is, both of those are currently licensed and inspected. There, the white truck was over here, as you can see, to be more clear and moving forward the next couple of pictures. The area that was on this side of the building, there was some miscellaneous equipment there too as well, has been removed from the property. The white truck has been, is currently licensed, has been moved where, this would be where the proposed addition would be onto the building, about this area right there. This is the area along the tree line, there's a few, there's tractor machinery, property maintenance equipment. This is the area where that rusted, or it was like a gray, or like a tan rusted tractor that was sitting near where this red tractor is. Had a flat tire on it, obviously looked like it wouldn't be in operable condition with it in its current state. As the public nuisance ordinance states, it must be operable and currently licensed. Operable in this, in this case with the tractor. Moving forward, this is where, as you can picture, where the black Dodge Ram pickup chassis was, was located roughly in this area right here. And you can see in the distance a little bit that the property has been mowed, has been cleaned up and mowed in that area. The remaining things that are there are the machinery used for property maintenance and other issues. I mentioned, everything on that list has been removed from the property, has that update. And then these, these are just some of the pictures of buildings that are within the vicinity, not, not near the size of the petitioner's requested size of 4,200 square feet. This one is about half the total area of the property that's just to the east of the petitioner's property. And then this is to the west, which this property owner has a little over 6,000 square feet on a smaller parcel size. Picture doesn't really give the size of the building, but you can see the garage bays there in the image. And then this is just adjacent to, or two properties down from the property owners. So, not the one over to the west, but immediately to the, this is a smaller building, about 1,200 square feet, looks like about a three-car garage. So, I won't go through the conditions, since this is a deferral from last time, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Questions?
I'd like to hear from the applicant and the neighbor.
All right, that's what we have left, so please come forward. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Penny Malsum, 48275255, Street, Garrettson, South Dakota.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the petitioner?
You've been cleaning it up, looks good.
Thank you. I would like to thank the commission for the deferral, so that we could address the, the, to achieve the results that are presented by the planning staff.
Okay, anything else?
I got one question. I know that neighbors will probably bring this up. You cleaned up for today, this moment in time. What about going out in the future? Is it going to stay like it is today? Or we're going to add more problems, eyesore to the community, so they're going to not be happy?
To add the extension would allow us to put a project in that area so that it can be worked on and not be left outside to be an unattractive, something to look at.
Anything else with petitioner? Okay, thank you. We have one more person in the audience you care to address this tonight? State your name and address, please.
I'm Lowell Horchus, Henry, my wife, Henrietta, and I own the property to the south. I live in Brandon now, 401 East Switchgrass Trail. I don't have a complaint, as long as they keep the property clean. I want to thank David and his associates for doing the job. I contacted Cliff two or three times in the last couple of years, because I've been getting complaints from the neighbor, didn't get results, so I guess what we did is push the right button to clean it up. And the only concern I really have is I've contacted the state about the amount of oil that he had in the barrels along the waterway, and there's really no provision the state has other than I can go to the EPA and complain to the EPA if it arises again. EPA has a ruling on how much you can keep on your property and what it has to be stored in, and if it's over a certain amount, it has to be inside a cement perimeter. And other than that, as long as it's kept in good, clean condition, I have no problem, because I don't care to get complaints from neighbors all the time. And I would like David or his associates to send me a complete listing of what the county commission's rules and regulations are, because I would like to turn it over to my attorney, so that he can keep it in file.
All right, okay.
With the liability of the waterway there, I want to be safe.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
David, you got that request? Okay. Well, listen, I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty happy that we actually have made people happier. And that doesn't always happen in this job, where people are happier today than they were yesterday. I'm going to make a motion to approve this project.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And that's our last item, we have any reports? Did we have any appeals from last time? We didn't, did we? Because that was a deferral, was the only thing we had.
On a second, we're updating the building code.
It's not just the building code, it's the international building code. And I've been telling Commissioner Kelly it's the European Union code.
It probably is, some of that stuff gets a little nuts.
He's not happy. But we do it every year, and it's required by state law that we do that.
It upgrades every, or updates every three years. And state law says that we have to have, we have to have a building code. If we don't, the state issues a requirement for us, which is the 2015 IVC.
So that covers plumbing, electrical, structural?
No, the IVC only covers structures.
The structural side?
The state, since we don't have electrical inspectors or plumbing inspectors.
The state does.
The state does, so they have their own uniform plumbing code and national electric code, which they administer to the state.
Dick Kelly would feel more comfortable if it was just the building code, not the international building code.
Yeah.
But I do have something I'd like to bring up if you guys are done. I would like us to consider bringing things to the planning department that, for revision in our planning ordinances. And I'll give you an example. You know, there was Turner County was looking at 6 million chickens coming, right? Well, I don't want to wait until we have a wild application like that to look at changing our ordinances. That 60,000 animal unit project would have required a 13 and a half mile setback, which is, well, if you were to make a circle that big, it's almost 600 square miles, which is three-fourths the size of Minnehaw County. I think that that's too much. And exactly what the right amount is, I'm not sure. But before we even had an application for something like that, I think we should consider revising our ordinances. And another example is, in our ordinance, we don't have any provision for fish farming. If someone wanted to come in and take advantage of our soybean crop and grow carp or whatever they grow.
Tilapia.
Tilapia, yeah, or, you know, lobsters, I don't know. Anyway, we don't have anything in our ordinance to do that. So suddenly, somebody comes in and wants to build a aqua farm.
A brewery.
A brewery, yeah.
Which we addressed.
Well, how do we, yeah, I'd like to invest in one. Anyway, I just think that we ought to find those gaps in our ordinance and make some changes or additions. And I think when it comes to the setbacks, 13 miles is too much. I mean, I don't know if it should be three miles, or two miles, or four miles, but 13 miles, it boggles the mind.
Well, it's never, it was never capped, the distance.
Right.
Right?
And I don't want to wait for a 60,000 animal unit project to come to us and then incite the populace by now revising our, so. I talked to Scott about this, and I've also talked to a couple of others, but I think that the process would be that we come up with a list of potential revisions, give them to the planning staff, and they would bring them to the, they would, you know, research it and then bring it to the county commission for an update. And again, I'm just trying to bring, prevent the need for peasants with pitchforks and torches from having to show up on a moment's notice. And I don't know that there are other things, but we did just do windmills a couple of years ago, right? I mean, before that, we had no ordinance on windmills. Windmills are killing all the commissioners in Lincoln County. Dave Gillespie, county commissioner, leased some of his land for windmills, and he had three guys run against him in the Republican primary. And there are two guys running against him, or the two Democrats running, and one of them will oppose him in November. But the people were so mad that he would consider leasing his property. Because let's face it, windmills just ruin the world, you know, they... Because let's face it, windmills just ruin the world, uh, you know, they-
Well, they're not a thing of beauty by any means, but, you know. Now, when, because, you know, we had the solar deal, but we had, we were able to address that one, right? Even though the city didn't like it, we liked it, the city didn't. I think it's how that one-
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great example that, uh, you know, I thought it was a great project. I've seen solar things in other places, and they're not objectionable.
They don't stick up in the air.
And they don't reflect, it's not like mirror image, uh, uh. Anyway, I just think we should look at those items that, uh, that we don't have applications for today. I mean, what if, uh, are we ready for a cheese factory to come to Minnehaw County? Like, like, like Brookings or whatever?
Get ready. Could be out in the eighty, eight hundred acre-
This from a dairy farmer.
Get ready.
He's, he's, he's ready to cheese.
That'd be a good thing for the dairy.
Did you hear about the explosion at the French cheese factory?
I'm afraid to ask.
All that was left was debris.
Yeah.
It was bad.
Yeah. But that one item tonight, like saying, you know, with the turning out there.
Yeah.
That is tight enough, you do a tight width corner like that, and people are usually pulling trailers quite often.
Yeah, well, the lights don't work on them all the time.
To, uh-
That's a little scary, that one.
To address the city's comment, we have required turn lanes before.
Oh, yes, we have.
Like with the grain, uh, elevator out at Lyons. I mean, you've got four hundred trucks coming in today, and, uh, they're going to be slow, they're going to be having a hard time.
School kids going to school and-
Yeah.
Everything else.
And we even, you know, changed that dead man's curve that was out there. And there's not been an accident since then. Actually, the Lyons Fire Department, uh, bought me lunch and complained that anybody that was dead would be on my conscience.
It's always great for them to be thoughtful.
One of the fire chiefs previously, when, uh, when we were looking at, uh, the MedStar stuff, wrote, uh, Bob Colby a, a note and said that, uh, the, uh, not approving the other ambulance, uh, he could put the obituaries, uh, on his fridge as a trophy of-
Sure.
Our decision not to bring in-
There's always-
Anyway, though, I think we should look at things that we don't have. That we might have, and things that we already provide for. The technology today is not the same as the technology of nineteen forty. And I think, uh, we need to, uh, keep our county on the forefront of having the best ordinances possible for both the neighbors and the applicants who want to, uh, do animal agriculture.
Yes.
Whether it's fish or four-legged.
Yeah.
Or two-legged.
Just like you say, we didn't realize we needed something for breweries and distilleries until this, a year ago.
And I think that we should, uh, be required to test their product before we approve, uh-
I don't like beer, so I'm not a good one to do that.
I, I still want to go visit the guy. I haven't been out that way to go visit the place.
I was out there looking at it, uh, when, before we approved it.
I, I was too. I picked a few hops off his vines and checked them out.
Are you sure they were hops? Are you sure they were?
Anybody who lives out in Romanah County knows what, uh, ditch weed is.
Right. It looks a lot the same to me when I looked at those, uh, those hops in a bud. Uh, they looked, uh-
Well, when he was so proud of the fact that he had two hundred and fifty pounds of hops, I thought, well, big deal. Until you pick one and it's like a feather.
Yeah, right.
Two hundred and fifty pounds of these is going to be a bunch. That was interesting.
Well, and, uh, our old buddy, Don South, didn't, didn't think it was fair that he didn't have to live there. And I pointed out that Don gets to sell beer at his place.
Yes. And you could also, there's a few other things you could mention to him too.
Well, anyway, just work with me on revising our ordinances because, again, some, if, uh, Sonstegard Farms chose to come here, we would have uproar if we then decided to modify our ordinances. And I think that when we do this process, we bring in everybody, come in and tell us what you think. Uh, you know, we're not going to lock the people out and make a decision behind closed doors. But I don't want to have to make the decision under the pressure of a project that's got, going to expire in three weeks if we don't approve it tonight.
Well, the thing is always kind of, those types of things, it's always kind of, I don't want to say it's been saving grace, but it allows us flexibility is the fact that ours are just criteria and not set in stone setbacks.
Well, people, you know, I tell you what, Gene Bender, county commissioner, sits here. The one young man that was going to build a dairy north of Brandon, uh, his barn was twenty-three feet too close to the neighbor who would not sign off on it. And we waited another month to fix that. I mean, we could have just said when the building permit comes in. And the neighbor who would not sign off, didn't sign off, he had his own CAFO. He, he was renting land or something from a neighbor on the north side who was objecting to it, but was further away. And so he didn't want to piss off his-
Farmers will always do, they'll do more for their landlords than they'll do for their wives. It's just the way it is.